Yeah, they always have a good turnaround.
Yeah.
Quite a few people show up.
Yeah, yep. Yeah.
Heartache you ribs and ham balls in Spani's theater. Yeah, they always do a nice, a nice meal, new program.
That's why I buy.
Yeah, I bought mine.
I got lucky, I got a cheap one.
I guess like Friday.
Doing all right, how are you?
Hundred and fifty.
They're doing a budget meeting soon, so that's what we're starting with today. Rescheduled because of the weather.
It was a other meeting.
No, they moved it.
I know they moved it.
Oh, I think we got that. What is it?
The library meeting.
Almost gonna have to pick it up this morning because we're drifting so bad.
It was supposed to be, it was supposed to be a Tuesday, correct? Libraries are Tuesday tomorrow, nine o'clock.
Well, besides that, I should every day.
Yes. I believe that's where it is.
Yeah, I just hope it's not blood too.
I was there.
I got nine o'clock tomorrow for the library. So then we'll be here.
The maintainer will go by.
We'll be here at nine o'clock soon.
I'll be double check.
Last Tuesday we were supposed to go there.
Yeah.
Yeah, last Wednesday, last Wednesday they moved it to the thirty first.
Yeah, nine o'clock tomorrow here, yeah.
Yeah, they moved that one meeting to the theater to the thirty first.
Right, right.
Yeah.
So if you want, we can, I mean, do you think you might increase it? You don't know till you meet that that may be good.
For other budgets?
Otherwise you don't have to be here at nine tomorrow, maybe we can talk about that.
Oh, that redistricting, that's probably.
It's up to you guys. I'll be here either way.
We usually want a little bit more.
He come to Lululewa, he come to Lululewa.
Yeah, well, ten o'clock we got four health and all of those.
Yeah, tomorrow you get ten o'clock for health and other clock insurance.
Nine forty-five tomorrow, what, what time is precincts on, nine forty-five? I didn't, I didn't have that.
Yeah.
Same place, unless you take unless you.
No, I'm hoping possibly the third one tomorrow too. Talk to Kurt, he's okay with it.
Yeah.
I can't see it happening tomorrow, yeah, tomorrow we have to have it. But the one on Wednesday, I have, I've also got a meeting in Cresco that day for, on social services. And that's our first board meeting of the year and uh.
If you're not there, you might get nominated.
Uh, exactly, if I'm not there, I wanna be there.
If you're not there, you're gonna be there.
No, that's why I wanna be there. Cause I am on the ordinance this year.
Oh, okay.
I'm not the Alvernet, I'm on the board, so.
So today at eleven you have roads.
Yeah.
And at one you have conservation and at two the museum.
Ooh. I have eleven the sheriff.
The sheriff.
You already did the sheriff.
Sheriff's done, yeah.
He moved up.
Okay.
Yeah, our team got all screwed up with the weather.
Yeah, that's right, we did.
We had bad weather?
We did.
Yeah, just a day. The sheriff screwed up everything.
I'm not looking forward to the freezing rain.
No.
So you got a day in tomorrow and you're done till February fifteenth.
Yeah.
Well, our county roads, uh, the gravel roads are still back to the snow.
Well, you better see her.
So once that gets flushed and then it's gonna be ice right there.
There was a, there was a jeep down there.
December.
I know you are.
It wasn't there. About right, literally days.
Yeah. My room four, still had a problem twenty-four this morning. And it looks like we slipped off the roads.
Pretty steep to be that way.
Back up.
No, we're about to see two roads to get stopped, so.
Yeah, that's right.
How's your, how's your hearing made you got out there?
Of course, high profile, you can get further into the ditch to go.
If you don't get stuck as late, but we're trying to launch the museum.
Well, if you're lower profile, it gets stuck a certain distance far.
I think so, I think you're really super.
We done one of the loins, then we ate uh some of the rousers.
All right, let's give that.
I haven't tried any of the sticks yet.
Okay, I'll try the, that person that we're listed.
Everything so far, my wife liked it.
Some law, I guess.
Yeah, okay, I'll try that, all right.
Oh, two.
Do you wanna be a janitor?
No, I'm not.
We made some turkey. Uh, whole meat turkey, this year, oh, got into that, boy, that's.
Yeah.
Zoom not working, Karen?
Zoom's not working.
Well, it just seems like it won't go off right now.
It's not, they weren't just calling me to do it on schedule. For two weeks.
Welcome to Zoom, enter your meeting ID, followed by town.
Actually, you need a Florida trip from like the second of the twenty.
I think I've been at the Keys, but it's a little kid, I'm sure, I can't.
Enter your participant ID, followed by town, otherwise just press town to continue. You are in the meeting now, there are three participants in the meeting. You have been added to the waiting room, you cannot talk or listen until the host is, you are muted, unmuted or unmute yourself by pressing star six.
Are you there, Tammy? Got us, okay, so you guys are on speakerphone to the board. Okay, I'm gonna view B so that you guys can talk and I'll just kinda keep an eye to make sure everybody's still in the meeting, okay? Sound good.
Okay.
Okay, thanks. You, everybody's on today, uh, well, we, uh, Mindy's on and Irene, Irene's on.
So you guys can talk.
Okay.
Okay, Karen? Yep, yep, we hear ya, go ahead.
We hear it, we got the paperwork, so.
You hear the guys?
Yes, yes, good morning.
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 Karen, I can, I can go if you want since you have the, the paperwork in front of you, um.
That'll be fine.
Our budget's less this year because last year we had the computer, or not computer, the copy of printer that we had to buy, so that's why we're so much last year. So now this year we're back to what a normal budget for us would be.
Okay.
If you have any questions about what we've requested.
Oh, I think it looks good.
Yeah, it looks pretty, pretty normal.
Yeah, I don't have any problems with it either.
Yeah, I think it looks good.
Okay, well, it was more difficult to get on that virtually than.
It was, yeah.
Do you guys, do you have anything else you wanna say to the board or anything?
No, I didn't, we're saying we didn't get to see their time papers, but that's, that's good.
Okay, I think they're all good with it then.
Yeah, we're good.
Thank you.
Okay. That's good.
Big good talking to you guys.
Thank you.
Bye.
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 Not sure, sweet, but.
Yeah.
Okay, you want this? No, you left it here.
Uh, you know, you can probably file that.
Oh. It'll rip the bags, I'm like.
Give it to Garrison or, yeah.
You'll get another one in the mail.
Yeah, I imagine Garrison, yeah, they like to send them to everybody in the brother.
Does Ben have one, give one to Ben?
I, I get that, it's my business.
You get the Granger ones, those are like worse than doorstops.
Their budget must be well.
Endowed in that area.
We must be paying too much for stuff.
No, no, they're what they land on.
See, I called him, I called about ten thirty, eleven, told him that's a bar.
Well, yeah, after he, after he talked to you, he talked.
Heard the brown house completely cut out their print catalog.
Nobody else was gonna show up again either.
I was just there.
What are you supposed to call again?
Yeah.
Oh, I mean.
A lot of the older, a lot of older customers, well, I don't, are gone.
Yeah.
I think that's where they hang out.
Well.
You want me to know, okay, I'll let you know.
Yeah, yeah, that's weird, yeah, he didn't have one.
When I signed up for A R M.
A little bit about the, you know, the hand.
They cut out the magazine, get out of the, everything. They told us. Last magazine, physical magazine.
I said, I think it was. But he has to go on more of it too, cause he's the one that has.
Yeah.
But he's, but he's still no problem, he could do it, so I think it'd be best.
It's uh.
Well, I talked, I had some newspapers talk to, writing magazines about snow.
Everything's digital, so.
They think it was going digital.
It's harder to read digital magazines in a wedding.
In snowdirt, unacceptable.
Hey, I hear you snowed in for a couple of days.
When you have the problems, you have it.
How many days were you out there?
From Friday morning till Tuesday night.
It was Friday, I can remember it was Thursday or.
Grunde County.
I got out there Friday morning.
Contract was so far, you know, one or two in each corner of the county.
That's another reason.
Storm like this, they go out, put them a path down through the hills with the snow lost animals. And then let the county come back in later and widen it back out by the other.
Well, the guy, the guy that I had fifteen all term of account.
Two farmsteads, and I get counted in both places, well, I stay at the one, well, I gotta get to the.
Lord, he's on his farm and everything else, and I said, do you guys have a mower?
I've always thought I should have one. Well, Luke Squires, they, they could be out, they could, somebody else could go and.
Do all that work to get to my house, I said.
They made two or three trips, gotta go a bit.
It's your house, like you're worried about it dying.
There's only way to get out.
I mean, we are, it wasn't like we weren't.
I walked.
We just had so much in it inexperience and so much snow.
We, we stayed in the house.
They just act like we were trying, you know?
And it was eighteen, eighteen inches deep.
Do we, uh, we didn't expect to do it all the time, you might give one like this one, one, what, every five years or one of that.
That's what's hard, just walking through that snow.
Well, it's such deep. Have you restocked for the upcoming freezing rain we're getting?
No.
I don't think it's supposed to be.
Get enough food so that if you get stuck out there, you can eat.
When you got.
Should, should you get water?
Yes.
Oh, with even the big loader?
But I'm good.
Wow, I bet. Oh, oh, okay, yeah, yeah, well, yeah, with the end loader?
That's what I was talking to. Uh, some of them, you know, have blowers and stuff, just use the blowers in old county houses.
I mean, we have been there in the past when we were growing up a lot, you know? I made a comment to one farmer.
Now there's no decisions left. After tomorrow, after tomorrow, you think.
One last.
Three, four days, I didn't see one kids.
Well, we'll see.
Yeah, and I talked to Tim.
I heard Trump's in South Carolina, home state.
Oh, yeah.
By about thirty.
Tim.
If he wins for home state.
And I was talking to him about it, he says, well, he's just, you know, he's a tasked guy, they have to take blowers, yeah. He said, yeah, he says they contract some of the companies to help mine, if they need. I'm really wouldn't have a problem with it. He said that him and Ben had been discussing. But.
Races.
Just in snows like that, it's not something you can do.
Primary, but give it to each.
Oh, exactly, yeah, if you're talking six, seven foot drifts type thing, maybe get four, five foot drifts, those blades can get pretty good, barely.
It doesn't here when you get dumped on one day, two days later you did it again and then the wind comes up.
Not that I'm through.
So it's hard.
Either trade.
Seems like when it blows in.
I look at, I look at action.
It's harder than words, mean things, we're looking at, and then you move it, people promise everything. Yeah, yeah.
Well, they can't.
I would, I would have a problem.
They can't because the.
Well, you know, that's like I, I hold those two guys, okay?
The areas person.
There's one thing about it, I said, if you contract.
Well, I had to discuss it, cause I was.
That million dollar policy.
I met him come out three times.
And the one goes, that's no big.
And I promised him.
Probably have anyway. With him, they've totally already had it, cause he told me, he says, we have the horsepower.
Because I like.
A big tractor, we have the horsepower, run them big.
Like I told everybody else, cause.
That ain't a big deal.
We're not elected.
But he's looking at.
Okay, he contracted his account.
Deacon, we're one who sent him.
Twenty dollars a dollar on a blower.
And do what they say. That twenty one five.
Well, that's a great, usual, you know.
They want with theirs, it's too big.
Yeah.
They were between eight and fifteen. And they're saying it's not believable, it's cause we gave them.
I don't.
Documents, so they were reporting.
I told myself, I'll tell Ben about it, see what he thinks about it, but maybe.
Yeah, I have a problem with it.
Like this, if it helps you to eat.
Since my wife is from. Oh, everybody loves a tractor, you know?
Yeah.
It kinda sticks me up. It ain't gonna happen, I don't want it to, I don't want two years.
ISIS, well, see, look at, he said, Billy, just go out, drive this road over here, you go through Grunde County Entertainment, he says, look at the difference in, big difference. I says, Grunde County doesn't put the trucks on the road either, I said, they put blades on them and then maintainers on their gravel roads, they don't do any trucks on them.
Better company doesn't.
And you can tell, I mean, and Grunde County doesn't have a ridge either, their gravel's up in the road.
A lot of counties are doing that, but when I first started working here.
I remember that one.
We were told that we did for quite some time, having, having a chute down. So it was an inch and a half off the ground. And, I don't know, slowly that just kinda disappeared in the last ten years or scraping. I, I'm obviously we're trying to use some common sense, or at least I did, I mean, you had some pressure, you know, get some pressure up on that chain, so it wasn't, you almost had to do that cause it was tricks.
But the problem we had was.
Yeah, we, we lifted it in the, in the middle, on the road, you get those blades back off the ground. Cause I know when those other, I've heard other counties did that.
Yeah, I mean, it was, you know, I was, Grunde County, there was gravel on the road.
People used as an excuse.
Boy, I got to Tim County and they're in a she where on the south side, they expect the thing out so they can keep away from us.
Were they wider than ours already then?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The them blowers, that particular section, road. Grunde County is wider, they have wider ditches and everything, well, you get to Tim County, we don't have.
You gotta look it up, that off as well as.
That's a, that's a big key, I mean, you only have eight, ten foot, you have a ten foot drip coming down that, there's nowhere to take it, I mean, you're gonna hold, that has to be hold, it has to.
Cause I said, well, are we using the blowers? I said, yeah, we have both blowers. But I said, along with that, if we have blowers going, that means somebody's not running blade along the trucks, are you okay with this? We're not about people.
See, I tried to be an independent candidate jumping in.
I remember a few years ago, we got some of the snow.
It doesn't concern them much, so hopefully you start to.
People tried to hurt him, but.
Oh, it's gonna be a mess.
It's gonna be.
It's gonna be.
I don't think I've seen any pro or anti ads regarding, like at all, of course, I like news, I knew it on my commercials, but.
It wasn't a mess that year, um, a lot of the Hennings has a bad situation anyway, cause he's got a long windbreak for his cattle.
I do.
That's only about twenty feet off the road.
For the two years.
And then you got the road, then you got this milk in the over, from the other side, which the, there's a, a snow trap in it anyway, and we just couldn't, they couldn't get off the road. And when that sucker melted, oh my God, and there's a bridge down, down yonder, maybe eighth, eighth mile, and on that outside of that bridge, couldn't get milk trucks in, we were putting three inch clean in that.
I mean, it was horrible.
I remember that, I mean, that was not good. We got that situation right now, I mean, if it gets thirty-five and whatever, and for a couple of days.
The rain we're gonna get.
Slip, slip, sliding away.
Yeah, yeah, Tim told, he says, Billy, he says, I told Ben, he says, I need a dirt crew. He says, so I can go get rid of these snow traps that got in this guy.
Sure been doing that for.
Oh, yeah. Said, yeah, you do need a dirt crew, and that's all they worked on is ditches.
We had that dirt queue, uh, proof for a while and it went to shit, we got, maybe got one or two done a year.
So you're talking about the elevated roads, I was in.
The elevated shoulders.
Yeah, I was in Iceland for two years and all of their roads are about four to five feet high and the snow blows off of it.
Yeah, oh, you can see the difference here.
Absolutely.
Yeah, you know, it does make a big difference.
Didn't you all, uh, get the ditches bigger on E twenty-nine a little while back to try to, I thought the ditches got, E twenty-nine? Cause it feels like those are really full right now and drifting pretty bad. Like some, some of those drifts cut through taller than our car.
They were, there's lots of snow out there, I mean, highway is full and it's, it's kinda neat, you go way back of like, as far as I can see, the field's covered with snow. Been a long time since you could say that, didn't see any.
That first snow filled all the ditches.
Yeah, they get, yeah.
Yeah, Kurt take E twenty-nine home to Dizer, there's, there's some really tall drifts that got cut through on that, you could tell the blower had to do a couple passes.
Are they off the road of ways? And they.
Like, there's not even a shoulder there.
Garrison locked up, or Kuzer locked up, that should be winged back to, I'm not sure what like, whatever runs that, what they're doing. Where it looked like the, we hit that drift when it was hard, but if you hit those going fat out of hell, it's just gonna race. You back up and go slower, it'll bust and loose and then it'll go a little quicker. Um, but yeah, those have not got pushed back just off edge of road.
Just getting their damn drifts out, it's just.
Not if the wind picks up at all anymore, those are gonna drift shut pretty darn quick.
Cause we probably should, we'll hump that though, get a little water on top of it, it'll, it'll harden it.
It'll harden.
Not that I want rain or freezing rain, don't get me wrong.
It'll get sloppy in there. I just want to stay on my ground and go into my ground.
There you go.
Yeah. All I wish is the neighbor's bean field north of my place had caught the snow instead of dumping it on my road. Boy, I gotta thank the man, maintainer guy that works out there, and he worked, he left like sixty, eighty foot drip signs on both sides of the road. Took me an hour and a half just to clean my driveway of the snow that he had, I mean, he had to do it, you know, I appreciate it, but.
That'd probably be mad, best for him, him and his dad are probably the best we got on my side nowadays, most experienced.
I mean, he did an excellent job, so, you know.
Except like four days late.
Justin Cupid.
I know that. Had so much to do.
How far off the highway are you, like one mile?
Half a mile.
Half a mile.
Yeah, half a mile south.
Yeah, Justin does it good, yeah.
Eight from always. My, my road.
Yeah, we had, we had up in Terre.
I dug out my, my driveway thirteen times.
Yeah.
I know.
The other guy you got done is a newer guy, and he Mexican, I guess he's.
I got him using.
Nice guy.
We go real slow.
Yeah.
Joel said he's mid-sized.
And you know what, we've been doing this, since I started, you know, you gotta do your job, and everybody's here to, here to ease.
Yeah.
You know?
It's grimy.
That's fine.
He's not doing that, but. Not, not Jill's, like.
Yeah.
I think, I started off the first one.
Bring it by Fonzie. Especially with snow, I mean, they, they've never been things, no, they want to help.
Rock.
That's, that's what's scary.
I mean, I was a little disappointed too, one of my complaints that I got was.
And I mixed it, I put it in, I put it in the anti-jail, but it was so cold.
You got three, probably pretty good, obvious market room, you know, going from, from eight to being eighteen, I mean, and heavy blade man always hit them first. And apparently nobody told him anything about order, and he went out west and whether it blew in and.
They're mixed half and half.
That's one, one eight point B, two days and got out, get calls, it's never been done like this.
That was one thing.
We're inexperienced, we don't.
This, this trucker's man.
You know, in the winter, some of the, some roads should have a little more priority than the other.
I could do some.
Yeah, well, then both, both of the guys, I got, both of the guys, a couple of them said, they're doing dead end roads. I said, well, they're farm, they're dead end roads.
No.
I said, well, that's, that's a problem, and we need to talk about it.
I had a reading last week.
They did?
Heather came. Heather came.
That was it?
Comeback part time.
They didn't show up on the list. There was three of you?
I didn't come.
What's this special occasion?
I was here.
Heather came.
Yeah, I'm been here for ten weeks.
Yeah, I remember Heather said it was just.
Really?
Self-induced?
I know what you're talking.
That tends to kind of, yeah, been there, done that. Bill says, you call him about wanting to get back in the truck part-time in the way?
Yeah, they don't need anybody.
Oh, I see, that's a good call, that comeback.
Wrong.
Yeah, you're wrong.
Wrong.
I didn't think you would be that.
I don't think they have that much good, we're, you didn't run, did they?
Well, that's the problem with those, the blowers, you know, they never keep them running, those blowers, we just don't use them and they don't, the plan is to drive them three, four times a summer, you know, go off, drive around, and they never get stopped. And when we need them, well, the one broke down, I don't think they have that till after all the snow.
Those are hard doing, so if you're all.
Engine caught up, well, now shovel.
Very. So those restocked?
Usually the four engines, they're.
They're minutes.
Blackwell County, or the P O T has one, but you can tell it's, it's on a newer chassis, it's a, like a international looking type dump truck cab, you know, ours are just straight out of the army.
They're moving the south.
I'm getting taller.
Oh, that's nothing, there was a guy who was coming in.
I'm shrieking.
Oh, it is my first, it isn't it?
Same guy?
How old are you now? At forty-one.
There's a lot of guys.
Forty-one.
They smell like diesel.
But it's like, it's like.
One more year in a fifty.
Come on.
My dad's nine forty, seven, seven years.
Went down south, it was starting to get a little.
Well, yeah. The nine turns zero is zero.
It really doesn't make any difference.
Sure.
I'm not your party.
Uh-oh. My mom was just. A sore tooth is a little embarrassing. Yeah, this wife and limb over it. Yeah, my mom's, I think they'll be, so it's pretty.
I think they're bought one, where you get a gear.
Yeah, there is a lot of. What, of course, and you got some of the main.
All of them down here, they're, they're buying stuff, yeah. They make a lot of money.
I think. Self here. Okay, now, if you travel in, everybody drives out, I mean, super early, will they watch the primaries and jail that motherfucker? It's stupid if they have their candidate. Think they just say, um, we won him back and he'll be officially out of our. It seems ridiculous to pay for all of the computers. George Stephanopoulos said he's been covering up.
It's part, yes. Well, that's lower rating than my.
Well, it says normally, you can't tell there's like four, six, eight.
But I mean, Gavin, it challenges a lot.
It's just, you know, it's usually huge.
Like, if I brought like a huge truck or jeep, like, I can make a little play of it inside, but.
I'm ready to go. You know, I see some of the time to count, I go out, like, I need to look to see which ones are. We have, like, I can, emotional says it's coming in, it's coming back young. So I still have to see what's on, but then we can just second.
Well, if I wasn't expecting that, I wasn't.
So that's what I don't want to make a change.
I don't know. Yeah.
Next time, they have more.
Yeah.
In my house. We got short. We have to walk a quarter of a mile to. I got.
So, yeah, so that'll be good.
Heck of a drive down there.
Yeah, yep, make sure.
I mean. That's where the ground pass.
All for the big years somewhere. Yep. Little bit of zero valley.
I'm wondering part-time. I didn't want to.
Can't ride. Twenty-five dollar.
I don't know many things.
Did you speak to your?
No, I was sending that to the lawyer. No, I didn't speak.
Yeah, well, and it was, like, I know for like the township around me, those two, but the other. Yes, I know some that at least I got. Pumps too, cause people are like, well, shit, I just got like.
That was a pretty good.
They did take clothes with them.
Yeah, them guys all work this way down.
You need to clarify this.
Quite a few years. You know, we always used to say, we pick up slower on. A lot of, a lot of the fruit widens down. Employers, we don't have guys who. My talk to a guy in the best county, they.
Yeah, exactly. Take it, that's why they get it.
And he takes out the summer. Are we, we get two alone and have two guys? That's, they gotta go back, that's an hour, they gotta. Oh, yeah, boy. It's late.
Very nice.
Hey, you guys.
Well, that's a good idea, Carl.
Well, you have your paper zone, cause if you're like, oh, I think of the roof, or if you just qualify, you're done, I guess.
Yeah, they're like the main thing. Cause they always basically, pretty close, you know, they all need a fun person to call and just move, somebody.
I got shit in my driveway just now, we had a huge hard drift and I'm like, I'll try it with the top of my husband, it's already was inside and he didn't answer, so. I tried it and I just, I was all the way up to the ready board, something.
I was in an alter, trying to get out of mom's hard drift this morning, and I could see from the hallway, that like all that monkey was broken up, it's something. Yeah. Tried to. Monkey, I'm like, did you do the track?
Yeah. It was just so hard, that was pretty good. It drifted back from the opposite way, it was just hard, I was like, daycare, preschool and. It like changed, yeah. Yeah. And it was gonna fall, it was like, yeah, it was slow, just play this.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, he, he pushed it while I was in the dirt, so it's good now.
Lions.
Everything good here, when?
The neighbor got.
For the, yeah, wicked ice.
Unless I'm coming down my road, watch out, there's snow so high, you can't see it.
You can't see around that in Dizer either, though.
You can't see driving on my driveway.
I, I run by my own Dizers by Winkle Place, cause I mean, I was crawling outside, I knew I didn't see, but I was still like, my nose was still happening in the lane and somebody's coming over. I stayed where I was at.
Well, they squirt too much, come up with a.
Well, I mean, they weren't going that fast, maybe twenty-five miles an hour, but still, like, kind of, well, picture it, it's not that much. Worst part, man, is on the highway, twenty-one by the car wash, cause the south west corner has a huge amount of stone, it's fancy, it's coming. And that's, that's high. But if you need to go north, you're like. Cause I mean, that's just where the speed limit changes down to forty, forty to forty-five to forty.
I never played on it, I coached on it. I played on the old.
Sixty days.
It's for the old, whatever is something.
I like that when this, when a board, you can actually shovel dizers up your sidewalk, cause if it's too cold to be out for more than ten minutes to shovel your little tree. It takes ten minutes to get all the year off, and you're not pretending.
That's what I said, I just read that.
When my fingers start to.
Don't, don't. Well, that one in Vegas where they have two. Like it's spread, it opens up and they just kind of bring the grass up and they, they spread it and they bring more and it's kind of. Just this one. That's why you need to never have permanent, because they have the bowl up and they have two ten yard section, and they have rollers. Basketball, we sure did there.
Technically has track. I don't know if it's not working or.
Yeah, I think Buffalo has. You know, no doubt.
Yeah. She makes about a hundred pounds, so. She literally put a band-aid on it, so.
They should, yeah, but you know, what was that? Back in the first second, a long, this is a late, I don't want to say much, I mean, two, three. It's have these clothes like.
She's got Texas children back there.
Well, I got a, she's from years ago, like.
She's running.
That's what I thought this year. Great challenge. And he come with real, like, bad, like, not once he flashes, you know, kind of tall, brown, he's brown on top and he does kind of sit where. We tell them, do it bad, or is it, um, man, they're nice. So I really think. Stuff like that. Well, this coach here. So damn good. Not that heavy, coach, he kills.
Oh, my dear Monty.
My body was fine, it's always, I got two here.
She's not.
All right, so I have nine fifteen, so we'll start with the flood.